2025 Town of Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. I call this meeting to order before we want to pledge. I'll just let everybody know that Commissioners Nakaboy and Gray are not available this evening, and we're also missing Town Attorney Varnell, but the rest of us are here and happy to serve. So would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join me in a moment of silence. All right. Our next item of business is our agenda approval. We have an agenda before us. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? It's gonna be easy. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We have, all right, we have an agenda. So now is our first time for public comment. I will remind everyone, this is a special meeting where instead of two public comment times, we have a public comment in the beginning, and then once you wrap up the agenda, we will be able to have a more open discussion for a public forum. So if something, if somebody's really pressing on it to get out now, by all means, you're welcome to do so, but there will be more time for open dialogue later on this evening. So that being said, we do ask anyone who's called upon to approach the podium, speak through the microphone, and identify yourself by name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes for speaking as an individual or five minutes for speaking on behalf of group. That being said, our first public comment time is open if anyone would like to speak. No takers? Now or later?
What would you prefer, Mayor?
Well, work for you, sir. Go for it. Yeah.
Before I get to the subject at hand, I want to thank the town for all the cards and best wishes and prayers for me when I just went on, nearly went on the other side of the grass, but here I am right now, not fully recovered. I have a way to go, but I'm getting there. I want to talk about a draft law being considered by the legislature right now, and it's Senate Bill 576, and it has to do with e-bikes. And some of the provisions of that bill are going to upset set people across the state. And for that reason, I would suggest that it'd be a good thing for the citizens to write to the legislature and tell them how you feel about making it a law that no one under 16 can ride a e-bike. That is one of the provisions that's being considered. Another provision that should concern us all, maximum speed for e-bikes will be 20 mile per hour. Anything over 20 mile per hour that may be sold as an e-bike is actually considered to be the same thing as a scooter or a motorcycle, and they're not allowed on multi-use paths. Something else to consider. Helmets will be required. I think, I'm not opposed to e-bikes. In fact, I'm a strong supporter of e-bikes, but they can be very, very dangerous, particularly to the walking pedestrians on the multi-use paths. We live on Bay Drive, and many times we're walking and an e-bike will come up behind us. We never know it's there because they're so quiet. So I think you need to put considerable time into educating the public about these. I have nothing else to say about them.
Thanks, Jack. Would anybody else like to speak at this public comment period?
Can we comment on what he's talking about?
The floor is yours. Go for it.
So he brings up a great point, but it's not just e-bikes.
Please identify.
Skip Chen, sorry. Kill Devil Hills, I mean, first flight. So he brings up a good point, but even a bigger point is, there's an issue now, and what about golf carts and all that? The problem is, where are they supposed to go? Whether it's e-bike, this is whole county and other areas as well. You know, it is an issue, and there's no real, that I know of, there's different e-bikes, there's different golf carts that go at different speeds. So is it a speed thing, or is it a, you know, bike or golf cart? I mean, you got electric scooters, I mean, electric, I guess they're called scooters, little things, man, they go pretty fast.
They do.
So I think we got to come up with a plan on where they should drive, for starters, whether it's the road or the bike path. But, I mean, golf carts are a lot, and I, you know, I golf, so I ride golf carts all the time, but I mean, they're big, a lot bigger than the e-bike, and they go pretty fast. They go over 20, I know some of them do, not all, but, and they're street legal, so I think we've got to come up with a plan on where, really where they should drive.
Thanks. Would anybody else like to speak at this public comment period? Go right ahead.
My name is Tamara Carbaugh. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my mother, Irene Anderson. We live Virginia Avenue in Kill Devil Hills. I live at that residence. I'm here tonight because to request the completion of Virginia Ave to Clamshell Drive. We live at the dead end, right next to the Paper Street, and we would like it to see it completed for several reasons. And last year, I initiated the process, and I got in touch with Steve Albright to find out how to go about it. And he had told me that the police department and the fire department, as well as sanitation, were very much for seeing the completion of the street and also for other reasons. We have a lot of, especially for emergency vehicles, Virginia Ave is a very narrow lane, and it's very difficult for them to turn around. And also, especially during hurricane season for ourselves, as well as other people on our street or other residents, if a tree were to fall over, it would block access for us to get out. And also, there's a lot of illicit activity taking place in the Paper Street. And actually, we experienced vandalism last June, June of 2024, where my mom's car, the back, her back windshield was blown out by a rifle. And we filed a police report and even had Detective Sudeth come to our house and talk to my mom. And that was, that was quite an experience. So there's some, yes, illicit activity happening on the Paper Street. So we would like to see about having that Paper Street completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more takers? Would anybody else like to speak at public comment? All right. We'll close first public comment period, and please keep in mind, we are having our public forum later, so we could discuss these topics or any more at length. Our response to public comment, Senate Bill 756, we talked about that before when we first made aware of it last spring, and it's something we are keeping a pretty keen eye on. Debbie, I know you've looked at it, and you're keeping us abreast, and as soon as the General Assembly moves that forward, I think we're gonna kind of pretty proactive in studying it, looking at what we can do. I agree with the first point you made, limiting the age of 16 is pretty controversial, will have a very large impact on our town, but absolutely needs to be considered as mandatory helmets. Max speeds at 20 mile an hour. I wonder how we can actually police that if the manufacturers would be required to put regulators on it, or coming up, there's a lot of ways to scoot around such things, but I'll open the, any discussion around e-bikes for the board? Any comments or questions?
Just same, same concerns that we've talked about before, so I'm interested to hear what the legislation comes up with. And then in terms of golf carts, if we addressed this like a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, when we were, we had a request for the golf cart, like electric golf carts that are not regulated, and we did not, by consent, we denied that. So, you know, we did have a lot of discussion about it then, and there are, if I'm not mistaken, they are regulated in certain areas. Is that correct?
Golf carts, correct. It's, you know, so it's most speed vehicles.
Right.
By the golf cart, but not golf carts.
Yeah. Licensed and. Right, right. So there are some regulations for the licensed.
All right.
I mean, with e-bikes, yeah, I share Mr. Jack's thoughts as well. Like, I'm interested to see what the state will allow us to do and see what those options are, but having spent quite a few, quite a bit of time walking down the multi-use path on Bay Drive, it gets a little sporty out there. You really don't hear them, and all of a sudden, whoom, there comes one right by you.
And they do not stop at stop sign.
No, no. So sort of, you know, get out more information campaign at minimum.
In regards to Virginia Avenue, Paper Street being filled in, Debbie, what's like the process? If you could discuss that a little bit on somebody to applying to get a Paper Street kind of turned into a traditional street?
I think some conversation has already been had with Mrs. Anderson, and she would be on the next agenda of the Street Improvement Study Committee. And Meredith had indicated to me that she has the phone number, and we'll call and let her know when those meetings are going to be held. There's not a date set for one at this point. It'll probably be later this month or in November. Is that correct, Meredith? I mean, November, December, yeah.
I took a peek at the map when I got the email attached, and how long is that Paper Street? It's not very big at all. It's like the length of a.
It's about 125 feet long.
And I would, as this process works out, I'd also welcome staff's input on.
Sure.
Accessibility and all the points that you brought up. So thank you for sharing. Any other, I'll miss there? All right. That being said, we'll move on to ongoing business?
No, sir.
All right, new business item number one, recommendation for engineering design for the 2026, 2027 street sidewalk and right-of-way improvement plan. I see the All-Star team is here to educate us all. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board Commissioners, Miss Diaz and Town Staff. My name is Emily Zeltman, and I work with American Engineering. Here you have Patrick Lewis and Pete Bruckheimer. I'm here to present on the design proposal provided for the East and West First Street project. As you've seen in your package, this project will include the water main replacement, drainage improvements, pavement resurfacing, and new sidewalk from the Beach Road to Corrigan Highway, and then from Publix to Canal Drive. I am here to answer any of your questions that you may have on this design. As always, it's such an honor to work for the Town of Kill Devil Hills, and we're looking forward to designing this project.
I mean, I, we've looked at this at length, and this is an easy one to conceptualize. So I'm, I feel pretty excited about it. I feel good about it. I think, I live off of First Street, so it's a very, a lot of pedestrian traffic. Even more people will get to the Halloween House now safely, so it's right there where it's a lap, and so.
Extra candy.
Extra, extra candy. So, you know, I'm excited about it and looking forward to seeing this come to life and looking at how, you know, reminds me of what we invested on Third Street, and it made that area such more, easier to get around and safer to drive, and I'm happy to see the same thing happen to First Street.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for engineering design for the 2026, 27 street sidewalk and right-of-way improvements project.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business item number two, appointments and nominations to the Dare Housing Foundation. I'm happy to share the memo, or Donna, if you'd like to speak. Okay. Not as I was trying to pass that off, but formed in January 2024, the Dare County Housing Task Force included a range of local government representatives and other community stakeholders to identify, analyze, and address all facets of housing in the Outer Banks. Mayor John Winley and Senior Town Planner Ryan Lang served as the town's representatives. The task force completed and presented its Dare County Housing Task Force 2024 Report, Housing For Now and Future Generations, which was adopted by that group on December 16, 2024. The work of the group has concluded, and kind of encapsulating this, I was very, you know, happy to have been able to serve on that task force since it was started. I think Dare County has a good track record of when towns in the county collaborate and work together. Problem solving seems to happen at a higher rate, and I couldn't, I can't ever let an opportunity go by under our eyes. Donna Creef, who's our president and our leader in all the wonderful work she's done in helping this come to life, but the task force has grown, has moved into the Dare Housing Foundation, looking to solve more of our long-term housing problems. I will throw my name in the hat to stay on as moving from the task to the foundation. I've been there since the beginning. I have enjoyed the work, and I have a pretty good understanding, and welcome a nomination if you all see fit.
So nominated.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Donna, we'll keep up our work. Thank you again. It's a, it's a complex and tough issue, but I feel like we're heading in the right direction, and it's nice having, not just the county, but, you know, all municipalities and stakeholders buying in. Okay. Next item on our agenda, committee reports. Commissioners' agenda? All right. Under Mayor's agenda, I have three resolutions and proclamations to share. The first is a resolution in opposition to propose limits on the landing of blue crabs by the Division of Marine Fisheries. Second is a proclamation honoring North Carolina veterans, active service members and their families in Operation Green Light. And last is a proclamation declaring November 2025 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. I will make a motion to approve all three, and welcome a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right. Do have a few more things to share. Dog Day at the splash pad. So having three kids, two being under 10, I'm a frequent flyer at the Meekins Park Splash Pad, and October 4th will be our town, town splash pad's Dog Day. So the kids have had fun all summer. It's time for the dogs to have their turn. At the end of our splash pad season, we open the facility up to our four friends and let them play in the water. Lots of pups and their owners got very wet, so glad we got to have them. We got a little chilly to do that now, but still pretty fun. The Fire Department had his open house event at our fire station last Tuesday. There were educational activities, wonderful fellowship, and also excellent hot dogs and hamburgers provided by our police department. Chief AC, everybody, thank you very much. Always a great time. Do I have the Historic Homes Tour and Ceremony? Over 60 people attended the town's Historic Landmark Commission's Designation Ceremony and Homes Tour this past Friday. I know Commissioner Hykins, who used to serve on the HLC, was in attendance, and it was a wonderful event, and you can learn so much about our community's history. So anything to report?
It was wonderful, as always. Video was extremely well done. Sandy runs the top-tier operation there.
You know, you couldn't have mentioned that name at a better time. Early voting, the town again volunteered for town hall, the town has again volunteered our town hall meeting room to serve as a site for early voting for all of our Dare County for the upcoming municipal elections. Early voting will begin Thursday, it's Thursday, October 16th. On weekdays is this, we open from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. November 1st on the Saturday, 8:30 to 3:00. And Election Day is Tuesday, November 4th. I believe there's only two early voting sites in Dare County, here and in Mantia. And then Election Day will have the normal municipal locations of it all throughout Dare County. Just a reminder to everyone, the town is not involved in the voting process. If anyone has questions about voting, registration, et cetera, please contact the Dare County Elections Office. I'll also take a second to acknowledge Sandy Markland, who ran this place like a fine-oiled machine many, many years for our voting, and we will, we're so happy that she's moved on to larger responsibilities, but she did a wonderful job keeping us this place a tip-top shape during voting season. One more quick thing, mark your calendars for the upcoming right lights illumination at Aviation Park, which will be held on Tuesday, December night from 4 to 7 p.m. That's all I have. All right. Town managers' agenda?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The minutes from the September 8th, 2025 meeting, the August 2025 monthly report, budget amendment to carry over contingencies for the West Martin and Ocean Acres Drive drainage and right-of-way improvements, acceptance of property donations to the town, zero North Virginia Dare Trail, and zero West First Street. Approval of the consent agenda will record the board's approval of these generous donations of property and authorize the staff and the attorney to draft and execute any contract and necessary fees associated with the transfer of the property. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented in motion will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Thank you.
We have a consent agenda. All right, so now. All right. Our Board of Commissioners is committed to our citizens in getting feedback. We set aside two public forums a year, which is slightly different than our public comment periods at our regular meetings. A public forum gives the board an opportunity to speak casually with the public on town issues raised on the floor. Exchanges will not be timed, however, to allow everyone to be heard, I reserve the right to wrap up a topic and move on to the next item. Anyone wishing to speak, just stand, give their name and address for public record. No discussions will be made during the forum, no decisions, excuse me, will be made during the forum, however, the board may assign issues to other town boards or committees or to staff for additional review or action. All right, that being said, a little more relaxed in public comment. If anyone would like to discuss anything with us, we're happy to do so. Please return to the podium, name and address, and you don't have to live in Katy Gage, anyone can speak, so floor is open. Jack, go ahead.
I neglected to identify myself. The first time I stood up here, Jack McCombs, live on Bay Drive, and I'm almost a 30-year resident of Kill Devil Hills. I'm very pleased to be so. Want to talk briefly about the Air Force, Space Force Memorial to Memorial Bicycle Ride. As it happened in the three previous rides, the Kill Devil Hills Police Department did a superb job, and everything starts with those guys. If they were not successful, the whole ride would collapse. We had almost 300 riders this year. Next year, they're budgeting for 400. But what I want you to do is think about what the Air Force, Space Force plans to do in the future. They are determined, and I have absolute confidence that they're going to achieve it. They want to have many, many thousands, up to 20,000 cyclists coming here and riding to the Air Force Memorial every September about the birthday of the Air Force. Last, this past September was the first year we started camping, offering camping for the cyclists. We know that we can't get into the thousands by relying on hotels, so that is already underway. So I think most of the cyclists in the years ahead are going to be camping. Again, thanks to the town, thanks to Dana and the chief for the great support they've given to this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Mickey Hanson. I live actually in Kitty Hawk, but I was told I could come here. I'd like to speak or ask about the, I moved here three years ago, so I'm not very familiar with a lot of things. Two years I started playing pickleball, which is probably a weird word for you guys. My concern is not merely the locals, but how do we continue to get those that come during our summer months looking for a place to play and facilitate that for them? I was just in Virginia Beach this last week where they had a major tournament, the best players in the world, 44 courts. I did a little research, South Carolina has a bunch of places, Wilson just built the thing. I understand that 6% of the revenue or a lot of the money we use for beach nourishment and the firehouse and the EMT station, which is right down from me, the small one, comes from those taxes. I also understand that now pickleball, like it or not, is in the top five of what people are looking to do on vacation. I understand that the age of the normal pickleball is not 60 anymore, it's 35 years old. First flight, I believe, is trying to get a club or something started. ECU, a lot of clubs and everything, and all I'm doing is trying to throw out, do you guys have any kind of plan or, you know, create facilities? We normally go to the rec center right down the road here. I know Chairman Woodward was there last week. We have three courts at our disposal inside, and there, you know, four people play at a time, so that's 12 with 20 people waiting to play. So I think there is a need locally, but more so, my concern is for those people looking to vacation. If there's anything in the plans or any foresight that you guys are thinking to keep those people coming to this area, is that really what feeds everything, isn't it? That's enough.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Debbie, I'll ask you, maybe Steve, how many pickleball courts do we have on KDH? I know we have, like the tennis courts at Meekins Park have pickleball on it.
Yes.
What other pickleball resources do we currently have available if people want to use them?
I think just.
Just Meekins.
The town of Kill Devil Hills, Meekins Field is our outdoor facility that has, we don't have indoor recreation in Kill Devil Hills, so when we redid Meekins Field, we put pickleball at Meekins, and then the Dare County Parks and Rec has indoor and outdoor facilities.
And can I just, are you speaking specifically to indoor? Just curious.
Talking in general, trying to get an idea if you guys have any feeling of what you've got to take, you know, if these people can't play, they'll go somewhere else. They'll go to South Carolina, or they'll stay in Virginia, they'll go elsewhere. It's getting to be a high priority. It's the fastest-growing sport in the world. You know, it's just something that people are looking to do. It's just going up the bucket, let's say. You may or may not have, that's fine. I'm just, you know, it's, I understand this is a town thing, and you're looking at roads and that kind of stuff.
Right.
You can't keep these people coming, and things get more expensive.
Right. This isn't for the town, but I do serve on the Dare County Parks and Rec.
There you go.
So I would maybe be inclined to direct you there. Board. So, um, I would maybe be inclined to direct you there. I'd know, we just, yeah, we did just. They did complete a massive survey recently, um, and come up with a plan for Parks and Rec because, um, I think we could all agree Parks and Recreation for the county, not for Kill Devil Hills, but for the county, has fallen behind a little bit. Um, and that's something that, that everyone is recognized and is aware of. And so the commissioners are right now considering, uh, where the money will come from and how the plan will be funded. It is a very hefty plan. Pickleball is in the plan. So what I would say to you is to encourage, you know, reach out to your county commissioners and, you know, ask them to take a look at the plan and fund the plan with what your priorities are. There are a lot of priorities in the plan. I will say that as well because there's, there's a lot that needs to be done for recreation. But that's county, that's the county part in me answering, not the town. So the, the biggest problem we have, whether it's town or county, is land. I mean, there's no land left in, in this town. There's just not. So, if, if we want an indoor pickleball facility, it's probably going to be in Eastlake. I mean, that's just the facts. That's just the reality of it.
Could I add on that? So, um, so I've been speaking with Commissioner Woodard about this and one of the things I suggested is.
Could you please?
Your name.
People at home can't hear you.
My name is Steve Chau. I live in Southern Shores and we also have a house in Kill Devil Hills for rental. So I've been speaking with him about it and what I recommended as, because I wasn't aware of this recreation committee until recently, or I would have gone to you guys. At the, at the Dare County Rec Center, there are actually six courts inside, but four months of the year it's used for gymnastics. And I think if we could find another location where gymnastics could be permanent and not have to take the equipment down twice a year, put it back up twice a year, that would be a win-win for everybody because that particular program is very difficult to get into. They only allow, I think, fifteen children and I know there's quite a waitlist to get in. So that would solve two things. But the other thing is, and I think all of the county or all of the towns would be able to benefit from this, is we have schools in the summer that are essentially sitting there with gyms that have the air conditioning on. All you gotta do is turn the lights on. And we could utilize that during the summer because in the summer it's usually way too hot unless you play very early in the morning. And obviously in the winter time, it's too cold, too windy. You just can't play. I know that they're looking at ten courts in Nag's Head that are outdoor and it will take anything we can get. But indoor facilities, we have, we have potential where we have schools that we could utilize in the summer and that would solve a lot of problems as well. And again, I'm not just looking at this from a residence point. I'm looking at it from tourism as well. And we have a rental house, so we would love people to keep coming.
A question for you, you guys about pickleball. Is there any leadership structure among the pickleball community on the Outer Banks, maybe form a pickleball league? I think about the, the first flight high school rents out its baseball field to a pickup, I guess, a baseball team in a small Eastern North Carolina league.
Hard ball.
Yeah, it brings in, it, it, the space is used in the summer when the school's not using it. It brings in some extra resources and income to Dare County. Could pickleball form a league and be able to generate some sort of revenue that could not just maintain that community, but also go back into the school. So you could get in there and the schools can really benefit more from you guys going in that space to rent it from them. They may be able to help you, but they, they're going to want something in return. And I agree. I think that it is a very popular growing sport. It would just take, if you dedicated folks to kind of put it together and it, it could happen, but. Correct.
Well, it's me, I mean, it's maintenance. Someone has to open it, someone has to close it. The fee really isn't, isn't that much. I mean, there's many people that have, that use the facilities. There's, you know, travel soccer, there's indoor soccer leagues that practice there. The, the facility use is very minimal, to be honest.
All of a sudden, my understanding is that there was a three hundred dollar person fee to utilize that again, which was kind of stupid. But, you know, as, as far as a league or anything, there's, West Side by Joe Marlet has a, you know, a group, there's a group in Corolla, Pine Island. I don't know, you know, in this area, there's, you know, some outspoken people that you may know. But maybe not necessarily group. Duck Woods has their own courts and a nice, they have a nice group in, in the play and I don't know, they're still all outside. Yeah. And my, my concern was more, not as many locals, you know, this, this reminds me of Iceland. You got thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand people in this county and three hundred that come every week or every day during the summer months, similar to Iceland. You know, we, we gotta figure out if, if, uh, ten percent or five percent or one percent of that thirty-seven thousand play pickleball, we gotta figure out how to get one percent of the three hundred that are coming to look to play and keep them happy. So that's, that's a good picture that, you know, it's not the locals. It's I keep these people who are now looking to play coming down and writing their houses.
Mayor. Not trying to interrupt the conversation, but if people don't speak in the microphone, people are streaming the meeting at home, things cannot hear. So we just want to make sure that everyone can.
Thank you, Mr. Adele. Everybody got the message. Um, well, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, anybody else like to speak? It's open. You just know where to talk from, that's all.
I've been here pretty long now.
Yeah.
So this isn't really, I guess it's just a comment. I'm on the board of E and R for Dare County and we've been getting beat up all year because of the evaluation and Dare County is tax neutral. I know Kill Devil Hills isn't. So their taxes on my house, which has probably an average house, six hundred, whatever, went up ten percent in Dare County and Kill Devil Hills went up forty-five percent. So I'm just curious, if, if everybody's going up forty-five percent, do we need that much money in Kill Devil Hills to keep everything going? I know we got some new stuff, but I was just curious if that's the average or it just happens to be my house or I guess I'm just passing along a little bit what I've been hearing for all year, for the meetings we've been having, people coming in and.
I know that tax evaluation is somewhat, I mean, we did have an increase, but different houses were valued in different properties at different levels of increase. So the, the more you value it up, the more steep some of those increases may have been.
And they've been going up an average of fifty to even more percent. I mean, I've been seeing it every meeting. So I, I pretty much know, I don't know about Kill Devil Hills. I'm talking about Dare County in general. And I don't know what the other towns are doing. I just looked at mine and went, wow. It went up forty, I mean, the valuation went up that much and I know the rates came down a little bit. But it still went up forty-five percent in Kill Devil Hills. So that, I, I was a little disappointed just, so I'm just passing along the all what I've been hearing for, for months on there. So, but anyway.
Yeah, I know it's, it's tough. Some people's houses had larger increases in value and it, it come back to bite us, but that's the tricky part of living in a community that saw values go up that much over the last six years.
I think that's my point because, I mean, Dare County's tax neutral and I get the difference. There's one up ten percent and they lowered their rate substantially. So that there's only one up ten percent. At Kill Devil Hills, they lowered the rate a little bit, but not enough to make it even close to what it was last year. And I'm assuming I've got an avatar on in Kill Devil Hills. Anyway.
Thanks. Well, that's a, this fair point. It is tough pill to swallow. But the opposite side of that is equity we've all gained in the last few years as well. So, uh.
Well, and I think also it speaks to the, what we're offering as a town as well. And now I, I mean, I'm, I'm with you. I had, actually had, so that I could answer questions, I had, um, staff figure out what mine personally was and what the difference was. And I think it, I don't remember, but I think it was four hundred, four hundred dollars, maybe around there. It's, it's up, but. Up for, by four hundred.
Your, your tax bill.
Right, 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 right.
Not her, not her value.
Right. So, you know, and yes, it's significant, but for me, it's worth it to see a new fire station, a new, you know, so you. Yeah, right, right.
That's not this year. We're not planning that now.
But we have things like sidewalks and, you know, that we've been, you know, yeah, 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 yeah. Now I'm just.
Makes you wonder.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Well, um, I had, had a thought. I wanted to circle back on the e-bikes briefly. And Chief, a question for you and maybe for A C. In the history of our town, have we ever had any bicycle patrols? In this instance, we could even have like an e-bike patrol. We do, Bay Drive is a very, very high traffic area for e-bikes and e-scooters and I mean, it's like an electric vehicle commercial over there. Some, such, so many go through and maybe a a visible presence of someone along, on our police department, especially during those hours when schools letting in, letting out, could ride up and down and not just making sure everyone's playing by the rules, but also educate and demonstrate like the right way to utilize these newer technology. Just a thought, have we ever utilized that? Is it something we could potentially look into doing on in future, I think? Because, uh, Jack, we did talk a little bit about the need to educate. We can make, you know, content to go on social media and go online and some people see it, but a lot of the people who utilize these vehicles may never access that, but we'd be seeing some of our officers in action.
Mayor, when I, when I first started to go to Chip Cowan's Outer Banks Bicycles in the early two thousands, he was taking care of a lot of police bicycles. So I called him tonight and I asked him, was Kill Devil Hills a part of that? He couldn't remember. He thought they were, but he said, I definitely had bicycles from the Nag's Head Police Department, Kitty Hawk Police Department. He thought he had it, Kill Devils, but that kind of dried up and went away. Like it or not, I think eventually, it may be sooner rather than later, the police department is going to have to consider putting some police on bicycles to patrol them to keep it, the situation as safe as it can be.
Yes, sir. I will remind us of Mr. Adele's rule, but, um, because that was a great point and I, but, uh, A C, I'll turn it over to you.
Dana Harris, this is Chief of Police, Kill Devil Hills. Yes, we used to have bike patrol years ago and with shortages and training required, uh, we're just too short staffed presently to put people on bikes. It's all we can do now to keep the guys in the cars, like the recs, breaking and entering and other things during the day. We hope sometime when we get fully staffed and we had talked about starting it back up again, getting the training. Uh, we, matter of fact, had an officer do that, go check the bicycles, see how they were, had, were holding up, see if we needed repairing because we used to have them repaired on a regular basis. So until we can get fully staffed at this point, unless somebody tells me different, um, we can't really put any better on bicycles at this time.
Okay.
And there is training involved. It's not just a matter of putting them on the, the bicycle.
We had some to a school, they gotta get to ride on bike, bike, how to handle. An incident occurs on the bicycle. Somebody gets hurt, how to do that and how to defend yourself on the bicycle. And I, Chief, I believe in a couple of weeks, the school that they get to, there's a couple of weeks they have to attend and have to pass. And we have had people injured during the training too.
Wow.
Would it be possible, and, and maybe this is already done, for us to do a safety demonstration at the high school and the middle school? Is that, I mean, that's
I don't see.
Who I see who could use a few extra words of safety. And, and I know, I mean, I was at the high school a couple of weeks ago and there's over a hundred e-bikes in, in that area. I mean, if one e-bike falls in that area where they all park, it's, it's like dominoes. And maybe it's already being done. I just thought that go, that would go directly to the source. Or at least some of it.
So we have bicycle rodeos that we do at the middle schools and such. The high school is a little more advanced, um, and, you know, it's a different audience, obviously. Um, and they don't really care about, you know, because right after, uh, Free was killed at the, um, stoplights back here. We started, or the school started forcing, you know, helmets, you must have helmets on. And then over time, that kind of dissipated and went away. Um, you know, but we do do bicycle, uh, rodeos, uh, for safety, uh, such. Um, and as far as the bike patrols, we still have the bicycles, uh, but as A C was saying, we just aren't short staffed and, you know, we, um, every time we take two steps forward, uh, we take two steps back as far as staffing goes and, you know, it's a, uh, competitive, uh, industry out there while keeping, uh, police officers up. And like you were saying, you know, um, you have to be, we have to have an instructor to teach, uh, police biking. And so now, you know, we're in the realm of is teaching bicycle, how to ride a regular bicycle. Is that the same as riding an e-bike? And are we going to have to, you know, transition over to purchasing e-bikes maybe? So it's a, it's a cost analysis that we'll just have to, we'll keep abreast of.
Thank you. It's interesting to learn that it was something we had before bike patrol.
Oh, yeah.
Kill Devil Hills is a very bike friendly town, so it makes sense. There's a history of that. Well, um, last call for public forum. Anybody else like to speak?
I actually have one thing. Um, so speaking of crosswalks and bike safety, um, something I've noticed, whether it's when school is letting out or whether I'm trying to cross the, the street, but the crosswalks at the schools, there's three, I believe. People, I mean, it happens on the beach road as well, but it particularly scares me by the schools. People just aren't stopping. They don't seem to be stopping as much anyway, um, as they used to. And so I was doing some research on it and found a couple of studies and coloring, having colored sidewalks actually reduces, um, accidents or potential accidents by up to fifty percent. And so I was wondering if that was something that we can maybe talk with the towns about. I know there's been a lot of movement with the schools to sort of brighten up and spruce up the area. And there's the new banners at the schools. It could be cool to, our colors match the school's colors. It could be cool to incorporate some blue, maybe a blue white stripe or, I don't know. And it is allowed in the town, in the state of North, the state of North Carolina does allow it. There are some regulations. We're looking to it. Maybe it's something because of that.
Draw attention.
Right, right. Right, exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
Might, that might wear off eventually too, but worth a try. Yeah, yeah.
Stop the look.
Right, right.
A couple of places, like Hilton Head was one I noticed, you know, the, I think you were saying that the stop signs on a bike path. They never stop, ever.
Yeah.
In Hilton Head, they've got a thing that says stop signs and it kind of lead goes into what you're saying about the colors. When you get to the end of the bike path or the path and you're hitting the road, it's on the, it's on the path itself. There's some kind of different colors and stripes, but it says stop or whatever. But I think it seemed to work a lot. But I think it seemed to work a lot better and they got a lot of bikes in Hilton Head. I mean, I get down there for vacation, we ride miles and miles, even the beach, you can ride there. But um it seemed to work a lot better than the stop signs to me. Half the time, they think the stop signs are for the cars. I mean, I've had people actually yell at me because I didn't stop at one of the little stop signs. Another thing in Florida, where they've got it, it's a little bit more expensive and I brought this up, I own a streets committee too, but they've got a thing where you, if you come to a crosswalk, you push a button and then it flashes. That is extremely communicative to to the drivers. And it's not like, you know, the people on the beach road, like you say, you know, we go all winter, you pretty much ignore it almost and all of a sudden summertime, you gotta pay attention and it's scary because one car will stop and they've almost got to flash lights for the guy coming the other way and the people walk across like that five thousand pound cars because it's illegal to pass, it's not gonna kill them. And so, but that, that is a tremendous communication device, kind of like the ones in Kitty Hawk, which we've talked about recently, where the flashing light comes on before you get to the the stoplight. That is, to me, that is incredible.
Yeah.
Communication for the driver. And it, you know, it sets you up that it's getting ready to change and it's kind of a similar idea, I think, but it's something that's worth looking at. I I, it's probably a little expensive, I'm sure, but I I think there's solar type of things, you know. Anyway, a couple.
Curry Talks got a couple of those flashy lights before the intersections that are, I I find that handy too. Anybody else? Hearing note takers, um, we will close this public forum and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.